We had our last meeting. And we do what?
Continue along, let everybody go home.
Unless it was on a Wednesday.
Good evening, everyone. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice drawn.
Can we get a roll call, Verro, for attendance?
Ms. Pereira. Ms. Alfaro. Ms. Hernandez.
Present.
Mr. Oregan.
Present.
Ms. Covas-Caraballo.
Present.
Ms. Valderas.
Present.
Dr. Neville.
Present.
Ms. Enriquez. Ms. Cabral.
Present.
That's eight members, present and one absent.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the regular school committee meeting? Okay, let's try to speak again. The regular school committee minutes from May 8th in enclosure A. Motion.
So moved.
And now I will turn it over to Dr. Albeida for the end of year celebration awards.
Great, well, it's, um, thank you, everyone, for coming. This is probably, well, I know it's my most favorite school committee meeting of the year and, um, and on us too, our chairs, and I'm sure everybody else that's here on this day is right now. We probably look more forward to this meeting than, um, than you do because it's a time to celebrate and we're just so grateful for the wonderful, amazing employees and staff and teachers that we, and students that we have in our district. And at this meeting, we get to celebrate just a few and we're very excited to do our Student of the Year. So we're going to start with our Student of the Year awards. And our first student is from Chelsea Opportunity Academy. And I'm actually going to let our chair read off the name.
Angie Alonso Figueroa?
Hi. So first of all, I want to apologize on behalf of my principal, who is not here today and is so sad because we have our senior celebration at COA where we celebrate all our seniors and it's today, so he's with them and the family. And if I didn't say that, he would not be happy. Okay, so now talking about Angie, and I might cry, but I do that all the time. So, our Student of the Year is Angie Alonso Figueroa. So I've been a social worker for over 25 years and I have met the most extraordinary people. Oh, I'm the social worker at COA, sorry. The most extraordinary people, resilient people who have overcome extraordinary odds and kind people who help others without anything in return. These people inspire me to be better, work harder, be grateful, and not give up. And when I think of them, it brings a smile to my face. Angie is one of those people. Let me tell you a little bit about Angie. She came to us at COA at the beginning of 2022. As soon as you see Angie, you know she's cool. Her hair, her style are amazing, um, as you can see. When you enter, when you see her interact with others, students and educators, and you learn that she's a kind, empathetic, and caring person. You teach her and then you learn that she's intelligent, curious, loves to learn, and thinks critically about the world around her. That would be enough to make her our Student of the Year. But Angie is so much more. She's determined, she's persevered, and she's also a loving and devoted CPS parent. She has a four-year-old son that attends the ELC. If you're a parent, you know how hard parenting is. You constantly question your abilities, you wonder if you're doing the right thing, you cry, you worry, you're scared, you're exhausted, you're overwhelmed, you're lonely, you're happy. Imagine being a young mother, doing it alone while trying to go to school and work in order to secure a safe home for you and your child. Imagine being told that there's something wrong with your child, that he's not meeting his developmental goals and having to go from specialist to specialist trying to get an answer and get help. Imagine being told your young child is autistic, going through the special education process alone to ensure your son gets every service he deserves. Imagine doing it all, being saddened, maybe overwhelmed by everything that's going on, but never letting that get in the way of your goals for your son and for yourself. So that's Angie. So I have been a fan of Maya Angelou since 1992 when I was in college and she came to speak, um, at my school. So I don't know if any of you have read her books or know about her, but I read her book, I Know Why the Cage Bird Sings, every year, and her poems Still I Rise and Phenomenal Woman are my favorite. So Maya Angelou is an epitome of strength, optimism, and overcoming life's toughest situations and rising above them. When I read Maya, I'm always reminded of Angie. Angie has suffered but has not let her heart harden. She continues to be kind, loving, and caring for those around her. Angie's future is so bright. She's going to be a personal trainer. So all of you, I want to open a women's-only gym with her, but we'll see if she lets me. But that's Angie. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm super excited to share the Kelly School Student of the Year as a former Kelly student, myself, and I'm proud to present this award to Yusuf Albari Barin.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Lisa Line Weaver, the proud principal of the Kelly School, and I'm here just to introduce the two teachers who are going to introduce Yusuf. This is Cynthia Lopez and Waldo Gomez, two of our fourth-grade teachers.
We are pleased to announce that Yusuf Albari is the Kelly School Student of the Year. His classmates and teachers recognize Yusuf as a leader who ensures he's always leading by example, either in or outside of the classroom. Yusuf is a great role model to his classmates and all students at the Kelly School. He's very responsible when completing all his assignments. When his assignments are completed, he's always willing to help others by guiding them and giving them good examples of how to complete their tasks best. One of the most admirable traits about Yusuf is his genuine excitement for his peers' success. Rather than basking in his own accomplishments, he finds true joy in seeing others thrive, a testament to his humility and positive atmosphere he cultivates in our classroom. He is always eager to participate in class discussions, sharing his knowledge and demonstrating a courageous desire, a cur, sorry, a curious desire to understand new concepts. He is consistently seeking to understand the logic behind questions in literacy as well as in math problems, approaching them with a high-order thinking skills. Ms. Gold, one of his English teachers, has noticed that he is proud of his heritage and is happy to share information about it with others. When he is confronted by challenging tasks, he demonstrates perseverance and creativity. Yusuf also has a huge heart. He is the first to offer help and he assists others with compassion and understanding. Yusuf is a true embodiment of our school's core values, excellence, empathy, and effort, has consistently demonstrated his commitment. His perseverance in both English and Spanish as a dedicated multilingual learner is a shining example of all our students at the Caminos program. We are proud to have Yusuf Albari as part of our school community at the Kelly School and particularly, particularly to celebrate, particularly to celebrate him now as our Student of the Year.
Good evening, everyone. So now I am honored to present the award for the Hook School Student of the Year to Dame Tejeda.
Good evening. I'm Trelane Clark, the proud principal of the Hook School. Very excited to be here to present this award to Dame, and I have two fourth-grade teachers here, Kristin DePaolo, special educator, and Anita Casida, fourth-grade teacher.
Hi, so my name is Kristin DePaolo and this is Anita Casida, and we have had the pleasure of being Dame's teachers at the Hook School this year. Dame embodies the characteristics of a model Hook School student. She is respectful, responsible, and cooperative all the time. Dame is a kind and hardworking student and a key member of our classroom community. If she notices a classmate feeling upset, she is one of the first people to check in on them and ask if they need help. She will also notice if one of her peers is struggling with their schoolwork and step in to either repeat the directions, show them an example, or give them some feedback. She does all of this without any prompting from the teachers because she genuinely cares about others and wants to see them succeed. In addition, in addition to helping out others, she takes immense pride in her own schoolwork. There have been parts of school that haven't come easy for her, however, she never backs down from a challenge. She comes in every day eager to learn new things and is always seeking ways to improve her own academic skills. With this work ethic, perseverance, and positive attitude, she has made incredible progress and growth over her time at the Hook School. She is an extremely dedicated student and her enthusiasm for learning is contagious.
Despite her great accomplishments, Dame is incredibly humble and leads by example. When Dame won this award, none of her classmates were so shocked because if there's anybody who deserves it, it's Dame. When we asked Dame's classmates why she was deserving of this award, three key ideas stood out from their responses. First, Dame is extremely hardworking. She gives 100% effort towards everything she does. She expects the same from her peers and everyone around her. Secondly, Dame is friendly and kind. One of her classmates said that Dame deserves to be Student of the Year because she always makes me feel happy when she sits next to me in class. Another student shared, oh gosh, my boy enjoyed that. Another student shared that when she was feeling nervous about her talent show audition, Dame helped her practice and made her feel more confident in herself. Lastly, the class shared that Dame is, Dame is most deserving of Student of the Year because she is empathetic. She genuinely cares about the success of others and is a team player. Dame puts others before herself and is always there to lend a hand and to make sure everybody is safe and happy. Dame has been such a bright light in the Hook School during her time here and she couldn't be more deserving of this award. We know that all of these amazing traits and qualities will bring her great success in middle school and beyond. Congratulations, Dame. We are so proud of you.
Buenas noches, good evening. It is an honor to present this award from the Berkowitz School Student of the Year to Alexa Lara Rosales.
So good evening, everyone. My name is Blanca Restrepo. I'm principal of the Berkowitz School. I am very proud of Alexa. I know we have many wonderful students at the Berkowitz, so for Alexa to be chosen means she was chosen from the greatest of the great, so we are very proud of you. Ms. Faville could not be here, but she did want me to share some wonderful things that she wanted everyone to know about Alexa. Alexa was chosen as the Student of the Year for many reasons. She works incredibly hard in school and always tries her best. She is kind to everyone and meets both, that means students, teachers, or anyone that comes into our school community. She's always helping others and showing how much she cares. Every teacher that has had Alexa in their classroom sees how exceptional she is. She always shows our school's five core values and encourages others to demonstrate respect, responsibility, empathy, determination, and of course, always collaboration, helping everyone. Alexa's kindness and enthusiasms and dedication are just a few of the reasons why she is the Student of the Year. Alexa's also shared when she grows up, she would like to become a teacher, so I said as soon as your application comes in at the Berkowitz, you're hired, honey. Congratulations, Alexa. Proud of you.
We are so pleased to present the Sokolowski School Student of the Year Award to Hanier Sevilla Matute.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Nate Myers, the proud principal at the Sokolowski School. Very proud of Hanier. He definitely earned it this year. We're very proud of you. But I will turn it over to talk more about Hanier. Ms. Nina Carbone has many great words to say about him.
Good evening. I am the fourth-grade foundational teacher at the Sokolowski School, and I just want to start by saying congratulations to Hanier. There is no one more deserving of this award than you. I have had the pleasure of working with Hanier for two years now, and I have never once seen him have a bad day. He is the kindest, most determined, and most enthusiastic student I have ever worked with. His positive attitude and smile can brighten a whole room. While other students are often tempted to root for their friends during challenges or competitions, Hanier is the only one cheering for both teams so everyone can feel supported. We teach children to distance themselves from drama with their peers, but Hanier goes above and beyond and always tries to mediate disagreements amongst his friends so everyone can play together. I have also witnessed Hanier's academics skyrocket over the past two years because he never hesitates to attempt a challenging task independently. He is the last one to ask for teacher help because he will use every tool in the classroom first to work through the problem on his own. He is the perfect definition of a lifelong learner. While most students have their favorite subject, Hanier is smiling through all of them and is the first one to raise his hand for every class discussion. His kindness, determination, and enthusiasm will help him achieve a very bright future, and I can't wait to hear about what comes in this next chapter for him. Congratulations, Hanier. Keep striving, succeeding, and soaring high.
Hi, good evening. I have the pleasure to present the Student of the Year of the Brown Middle School, and it's Kimberly Fuentes.
Good evening. I'm Brandon Carr. I'm one of the assistant principals at the Brown Middle School, and I just want to say real quick, when I saw the final list of students who were, who were up for this award, I wasn't, you know, hoping that she won, but I'll just say, I'm very happy she did. Not supposed to have favorites, but when I saw her name on the list, I was like, this is, this is perfect because you're so, so deserving and just, we're just so thankful that you've been a part of the Brown community for the past four years. So I'm going to pass it off to one of her teachers, Laura Lindonio, to say a few more words.
Good evening, everyone. I am Ms. Lindonio. I am a seventh and eighth grade teacher at the Brown. I've had the privilege of working with Kimberly for a little over two years now. Kimberly Fuentes embodies all of our five core values: identity, growth, rigor, joy, and community. Truthfully, she has embodied them since she stepped foot into BMS four years ago. Fuentes, as we call her, takes challenges head-on in any of her classes, where she's eager to learn regardless if it's in Spanish or English. She actively celebrates her complex identities with resilience and actively works to break her glass ceiling. She constantly brings joy and enthusiasm to any space she's in. Fuentes has volunteered to help during the summer to set up for the school year, has helped translate for caregivers during family conferences, and has developed into an active member of our community during soccer and volleyball, where she has become a leader and a coach to other girls. Mr. Carr says that it's hard not to have favorites. In a few years, I'll look back and I will always remember you. Congratulations to Fuentes, our Student of the Year. Now, I know, I know there are translation services, but I would like to say this in Spanish as her family arrived late and I don't want them to miss out on the message. Buenas tardes a todos. Soy Ms. Lindonio. Soy maestra de Caminos de séptimo y octavo grado en la Escuela Brown. He tenido el placer de trabajar con Kimberly, que ahorita está llorando, durante más de dos años. Kimberly Fuentes representa claramente nuestros cinco valores fundamentales: identidad, crecimiento, rigor, alegría, y comunidad. En realidad, los ha representado desde que pisó la Brown hace cuatro años. Fuentes, como la llamamos, toma los desafíos de frente en cualquiera de sus clases, donde está ansiosa por aprender sin importar si es en español o en inglés. Celebra activamente sus complejas identidades con resiliencia y trabaja activamente para sobrepasar sus barreras. Ella constantemente aporta alegría y entusiasmo a cualquier espacio en el que se encuentre. Fuentes se ha ofrecido como voluntaria para ayudar durante el verano en preparación para el año escolar, ha ayudado a traducir para las familias y guardianes durante las conferencias familiares, y es un miembro activo de nuestra comunidad en el fútbol y voleibol, donde se ha convertido en un líder y entrenadora de otras niñas. Mencionaba que sé que es difícil tener favoritos, pero sé que en algunos años voy a recordar este tiempo y es imposible no recordar a Fuentes. Felicidades a Fuentes, nuestro estudiante del año.
Buenas tardes a todos. Tengo el gran placer de presentarle el premio del estudiante, el premio del estudiante de la Escuela Clark, y el estudiante de este año es Ashley Mejia Gongorra. Ahora se lo voy a traducir a inglés. I have the great pleasure of presenting the Student of the Year Award for the Clark Avenue Middle School to Ashley Mejia Gongorra.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Talbot and I'm very honored to be the principal of the Clark Avenue Middle School. And unlike Mr. Carr, I will say, this is one of my favorite students. And she has been, since she joined us in fifth grade, when we opened up our cafeteria for students to come in to do online learning at the very beginning of COVID. And we built a very strong relationship at that point, and I was very pleased when I heard from her eighth-grade teachers that she was chosen. So I'm going to turn it over to them to also speak to, about her, Ms. McKinnis, Ms. Juan, and Ms. Perella.
So every year, the eighth-grade team at the Clark Avenue School is asked to choose a student who has gone above and beyond expectations throughout their middle school years to be named Student of the Year. When asked this year, there was an immediate and unanimous decision that this honor should go to Ashley Mejia Gongorra, no questions asked. Ashley has proved to asked. Ashley has proved to be kind, supportive, independent, curious, and also incredibly hardworking. Her hard work has paid off in the overwhelming growth that she has made this school year across all of her classes. One small piece of evidence being that Ashley's I-Ready reading scores showed a 311% growth towards her typical growth goal, growing three years in just this one school year. Ashley's hand... Ashley's hand is always the first to go up when analyzing a character or discussing writing strategies. Her ideas not only show her commitment to her education, but also show her social-emotional skills as a young woman. She understands how human beings work and how to communicate effectively.
Ashley has identified certain aspects of school to be challenging, like spelling words correctly as a multilingual learner and staying motivated when her peers may not be. Yet never once has she let these challenges keep herself from pushing through to make independent growth or aid in the growth of others. Some examples of this is constantly quizzing or instructing her teachers when she learned about their goals of learning Spanish, checking out books from the library in both Spanish and English so she and her mother could read together at home, keeping up with classroom routines such as updating schedules and dates for teachers on their boards, helping a class may understand an assignment, and introducing herself and providing tours to students who are new to the school.
When asked what she would like to do with her future, Ashley has shared a variety of ideas. However, there is one commonality. Ashley plans on using her strengths to help others, to make a positive impact in her communities. We have no doubt that Ashley will do incredible things both in high school and in whatever she decides to do with her future. We cannot wait to watch her grow. Congratulations, Ashley, and thank you for everything you have done for the Clark Avenue School community.
It is my pleasure to present this certificate to Claudia Villera Chacon.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michelle Martinello. I am the principal at The Wright Academy, and we are so proud of Claudia. And I am going to let Claudia's teachers speak to the amazing things that she has accomplished the last four years at The Wright. We have Isabel Meggs and Jessica Acidorian.
I am so proud to be here celebrating with Claudia and her family her much-deserved Student of the Year Award. Claudia is a uniquely hard-working student. Regardless of the subject or task, Claudia is ready to sit down and give it a try. She is consistently kind to others, respectful of her classmates and teachers, and ready to learn. Over the course of the year, Claudia has gained confidence as a student. Now, by June, she is a leader for her classmates. She encourages them to work through difficulties and frustrations and helps them advocate for themselves. As her multilingual learner teacher for the past two years, I have seen Claudia become a diligent, curious, and outstanding student, and I am so excited to see what comes next for her.
I am also honored to be here tonight in celebration of Claudia. I've had the pleasure of working with you, Claudia, over the past two years over several subject areas. I can't think of anyone more deserving than you. You are a hard-working, responsible, confident, and, most importantly, kind and respectful child. You take great pride in the work you do, and you face challenges in the classroom head-on. I've watched you, Claudia, welcome students into her friends group, be a role model for her peers, and accept everyone for who they are. I hope that in high school, you continue to be your hard-working self and be kind and accepting everyone into your groups. I'm so excited for you, Claudia, and I can't wait to hear about all your future success.
Well, I have the honor of announcing the Chelsea High School Student of the Year, Giselle Rodriguez.
Good evening. I'm Obed Morales, proud principal of Chelsea High School. Muy buenas noches. Soy Obed Morales, el orgulloso director de la Chelsea High School. I have the great honor and privilege to present Chelsea's High School Student of the Year. We have over 1,600 students at Chelsea High School. Many of them are worthy of this honor. Many. However, Giselle, you are exemplary of this honor for many reasons, and I'm going to go into it. Giselle excels in all areas. She gives herself 100%. As a student athlete, last year, I saw Giselle suffer a setback, and one day, I saw her with her brace on her knee. And I asked her what happened, and she said she was injured, and she was not going to be able to continue for track for that season. At all times, when you meet Giselle and you have interactions with her, she's smiling, she's positive, and this is all part of her character. Giselle is our valedictorian this year. That personal challenge is a testament to her perseverance, and she's had many trials and tribulations to get here. I had a brief conversation with a principal that she had when she was in elementary school, who's a retired principal, and remembers Giselle when she was in school. And again, these are the things that were reminded to me when I had this conversation with her because of her perseverance. When you interact with her, she's always polite, she's professional, but she holds you to what her advocacy is, as evident by her leadership, part of the class officers for the Class of 2024, who were extremely organized: fundraising, prom, and making a positive change for our school. Giselle was a key component of this process. I'm sure she was going to do well as she goes on to Brown University next year. Lastly, believe. I've always said, believe in yourself, believe in others, believe in your families, and you're a testament that when you believe and you put the hard work and you persevere, you will accomplish all of your goals. We look for great things from you, Giselle, as you move on to Brown in the future. And remember, you always have a home at Chelsea High School, and you'll always make us proud, and I know you will. Congratulations, Giselle, Chelsea's High School Student of the Year.
Okay, and last but not least, for our Students of the Year is from Chelsea Virtual Learning Academy, Aiden Peña.
Hi, my name is Meg Messini, and I'm the principal of Chelsea Virtual Learning Academy. Why does Aiden Peña deserve to be Chelsea Virtual Learning Academy's Student of the Year? When I met with our CVLA staff members and teachers about a month ago to determine who was to be nominated for our Student of the Year, there was no question that Aiden Peña was the student. In a short time, you will all understand why. And actually, I need to say that right before this meeting, I spoke with Aiden's math teacher, and she said, "There is no student in our school that is more deserving of this award." And she just reiterated it. She was so happy for Aiden. But first, before I share about all of Aiden's wonderful qualities, I need to tell you a story. We are very fortunate because Aiden has been in our school for three years now. In fact, Aiden Peña was our very first-ever CVLA student. Aiden came even before some of our teachers came. I remember his father, Mr. Daniel Peña, bringing Aiden to my office, which was at the Clark Ave. School at the time. I had just started working a week or so before, in mid-August, there was no school, and the school was to open in a few short days. There stood Aiden, a shy 6th grader. I described the idea of this new school that had not even been opened yet to Mr. Peña and Aiden, and they signed up for Aiden to be our first official student. I wanted to say a special thank you to Mr. Peña and Ms. Him Jazick, who are Aiden's parents, for having such an amazing son and for trusting us with Aiden's schooling these past three years. Aiden is a straight-A student. He probably has the highest grades of all of our students. He is someone who is never late or absent. He takes his education seriously. He is polite, caring, and funny. He is humble, hard-working, and never complains. When asked to describe Aiden, these are the words that our staff members shared. "Aiden is always kind to others. He volunteers when others won't. He is considerate of others and holds back from answering questions that he knows the answers to so that classmates can have a chance to answer. He participates often. He consistently attends in-person events. As you know, we're virtual, but we do have in-person events. Aiden is there. Aiden has a great attitude. He is hard-working. He's kind. He is a good friend. He shares his dog with the school. Max is our unofficial mascot. He shows up on screen sometimes. He is willing to participate and engage other classmates. He always has his camera on, so Deputy Superintendent Delaney will appreciate that. Aiden is a model student. He is a great ambassador of CVLA, and his alter ego is Cool Guy. Aiden is a leader. He is resourceful, genuinely kind and caring. Next year, Aiden will be attending Northeast Metropolitan Regional Professional School in Wakefield. His mother is an alum of there. Aiden, you've been with us since CVLA's beginnings, even before some of our teachers were hired. It's been said that firsts are best because they are beginnings. Aiden, you will always be our first student. You were at the very beginning for us at CVLA, and we never will forget you because you're one of the best. Max, our official mascot, we will never forget him, and we will never forget your cool guy persona. Aiden, the CVLA teachers, staff members, and I wish you and your family all the best, and know you will continue to grow and learn and be an amazing member of the Northeast student body. Congratulations.
Ms. Lamboy, if you can come up?
Good evening. Is Erin Chan from the Hooks Elementary School here? Could he come forward? Hi, my name is Monica Lamboy. I'm the Executive Director of Administration and Finance. And one of the many things that I do is prepare the annual budget for Chelsea Public Schools each year. So that involves lots of spreadsheets, lots of numbers, lots of writing. And the most fun part of the process is to pick the student artwork. It's my favorite part of the process. It's kind of like having ice cream after eating your vegetables at dinner, and it makes me so happy. And the single funnest part is to pick the cover for the budget book because that's always front and center. And this year, we picked Erin's artwork, which I'm going to show here. Do you have the big one? And it stood out immediately. Among all of the many pieces of art that I received, this one stood out for its heart. It also really empathizes our saying for this year with "Strengthen, Support, and Sustain." The heart, the beautiful scenery, the colors, it really spoke to me, and I appreciate the artist that is Erin Chan, and thank you so much for loaning us this beautiful piece of art for our budget.
Okay, so the next portion of our award ceremony is our retirees, and I really have a hard time with this one right now because we're a few of our retirees, I really have been here for a very long time, all of them, and it's hard to say goodbye. But first, we just want to say thank you for your service. We are so grateful for all of you that are here tonight. Some of our retirees could not be here tonight, and so we will go out. I'm going to say the names of the retirees, even though they couldn't be here, and then the ones, the retirees that are here, we will acknowledge. So for the retirees that are not here tonight, our teachers are Ms. Priscilla Pano. She's an educator at Chelsea High School, and she was at Chelsea High School for 20 years and eight months. Our next retiree that could not be here is Joanne Jacma. She's an educator at the Kelly School for 28 years and eight months. And the last teacher retiree is Alana Asher. She's a teacher at Chelsea High School for 19 years and 10 months. So congratulations to our teacher retiree. And then for our buildings and grounds, we have Paul Conway. He was... And then for our buildings and grounds, we have Paul Conway. He was, worked maintenance at the Maury H. Siegel Clark Avenue School for 32 years and five months. Porfirio Figueroa. He was the maintenance at the Mary C. Burke Complex for 24 years and five months. So congratulations to our two building and ground retirees. And then Assistant to Cook and Baker, we have Maureen Bubloski. She was the Assistant Cook Baker at Chelsea High School for 29 years. And now I would like to honor those that are present tonight. And I am going to start with Ms. Diana Stacco-Milleri. So Diane, I'm going to read your citation to you right now. So if you can, you can just face everybody as we, I read your citation. And it's so nice to see you. Diane retired about six months ago. So she's come back with us. Yeah, she, she looks so rested.
No wonder she looks so happy.
She looks so, so rested and youthful. Whereas Diane Stacco-Milleri has been in the Chelsea Public Schools for 22 years and nine months. And whereas Diana has a, has been a dedicated principal clerk since 2000 at the Morris H. Siegel Clark Avenue Middle School and the District Special Education Office. And whereas Diana has been a positive role model for students and staff throughout the district. And whereas Diana has conducted her responsibilities with dignity and professionalism. And whereas she has brought honor to herself, her family, and her colleagues through her contributions and dedication to the youth of Chelsea. And therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent and the members of the Chelsea School Committee extend their sincerest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Diana Stacco-Milleri on her contributions to and career with the Chelsea School Department on this occasion of her retirement. I'm going to sign this. Okay, if all school committee members kind of go, we'll all take a picture with you, Diane. Oh gosh, I don't know why I didn't have any of these. Fine.
It's a little complicated here, taking this paper all her side and we have to do as a team. It's a team effort.
It really is. All right. And so the next one, I was wondering why all the fire department was here. And then I realized, oh yeah, Maria's married, husband's the fire department. I was like, why is the Chelsea Fire Department at our award ceremony? So anyways, so Maria, I want to say a few words before I do this citation only because Maria is one of our most dedicated employees. I've, I've heard stories about you. I have heard stories that Maria has walked through snowstorms to make sure payroll was completed. And this is no joke. I've heard stories because Maria is so committed and she wanted to make sure that everybody was paid on time. And she would literally come at 4:00 AM and do what she needs to do. I've also, I should have remembered a little smarty pin for you because Maria was so excited when, and back in the day when they created those pins that were red, black, and green. Instead, she would, she wouldn't have to use the different colors. She could just use one pin. And, and then Maria had told me she was going to retire about two years ago. And I think I must have almost had a little minor panic attack because I was like, who's going to do the work of Maria? Because we depend on her so much and we really didn't have a backfill and we weren't planning. And so Maria, I don't know, Maria, by sheer miracle, you, you stayed one more year and you gave us the gift of one more year. And I, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for always, your hard work, your dedication, the hours, the, there's no one more dedicated to the work that they do. And I know people don't see what you do all the time because you're in the background, but everybody knows that if Maria didn't do her job, none of us would get our checks. So I'm just, so if, if, if they start coming late, you're going to know why. Give us some grace in the business department because I always say, I think Maria, when you leave, we're going to need about three or four people to replace you. And I really do sincerely mean that. And I'm just so grateful. Thank you for giving us the gift of, I'll say, I, I know it's, it's here 32 years. And I know to your, your, your husband, thank you for sharing her with us. Because I know this work is so demanding that you've had to give, give of your time together because of this work, because she was so, she's so committed to us. And I just want to say thank you too because you sacrificed too. And I'm just truly grateful. All right, all right, Maria. Whereas Maria Acosta has been in the Chelsea Public Schools for 32 years. Whereas Marie has been a dedicated senior clerk, executive secretary, principal clerk, senior accountant for payroll, and lastly, assistant business manager for payroll since 1992 at Chelsea Public Schools. And whereas Maria also served as a school committee clerk under Boston University from 1993 to 1995. And whereas Maria has been a positive role model for students and staff throughout the district. And whereas Maria has conducted her responsibilities with dignity and professionalism. And whereas she has brought honor to herself, her family, and her colleagues through her contributions and dedication to the staff, students, and families of Chelsea. And therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent and the members of the Chelsea School Committee extend their sincerest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Maria Acosta on her contributions to and career with the Chelsea School Department on this, the occasion of her retirement. So thank you. No, she don't want to. What did I miss?
Sign here.
What did I miss?
I don't know. I've been laughing.
Okay, well, let the fire department take care of their fire now.
They called them and they said, "We'll be there in a little bit."
Okay, our next retiree is Jackie Bivier. All right. So I always, this is another retiree that I'm like, "Do you have to retire? You, I had known you were going to retire. You told me. And then you said, "No, I'm not going to retire." Almost just like Maria. You've like, "I'm not." And then when you told me, I was like secretly happy. Because I knew, I was like, "Oh, good. When we're here to prepare." So Jackie, you run, I don't know if everybody knows this, how many kids do we have on a daily basis at the ELC? About? Eight hundred and forty-eight little people. Little, little people, all under the age of six, between the ages of six and three at the Early Learning Center. And Jackie and her team, the, the three-headed monsters, three-headed lady monsters, they take care of all, all the students. And there, amongst the principals, we always have the ELC as a model for the fired, for the fire drills actually, because they can get out in seconds. They can evacuate the little, the littles quicker than the high school old bed.
And they don't go to Dunkin' Donuts.
Oh, and so even Jackie's retiring, but she's not going to go far because she's going to come back and help us. And she's going to the high school. So maybe your fire drill rates can increase by a few seconds. But Jackie runs a very tight, tight ship at the Early Learning Center. And you, I, you, I never, like, I've been here five years. I never hear from, I'm like, is the Early Learning Center there unless I go visit? Because you, it's such a tight ship. And Jackie, your leadership is, is stellar. And the fact that you've been here for so long, I, again, sometimes when you have people who, who've been in the job for so long, you don't realize all that they do. And I say this all the time until a person leaves. And so we'll discover that. But I know that you've, you have Margot and Kim and now Mimi. And I know you've probably, you've developed them. And so the ELC, I know because of your leadership over the years and many years, is in good hands. And, and I'm truly grateful. But I do hope you get some time off. I hope you get to enjoy Gloucester a little bit and then the water and just rest. So that way you can come back refreshed to be at the high school a little bit.
I tried to convince her to stay on because my grandson is one, will be one soon. And I think that she should be there because he's going to go there. And she was there with my daughter and my son. So she should be there for my grandson. I couldn't convince her to stay. I tried twice already. I've tried convincing her.
I know. So, but Jackie, it's just been a remarkable, it's been remarkable watching you in action. And I actually learned a lot from you too. And I appreciate being able to, to learn about how we do things in Chelsea. Because as a new superintendent, five years ago, I didn't, there was a lot that I had to learn. And so thank you. And I'm, I'm so grateful. It's not goodbye. And any of, any of our retirees who are retiring are welcome to come back.
Anyone that's retiring but still keeps on to work.
Anyone that's retiring, we take a break first, recoup, and then come back. Wait, but so let me go ahead and do Jack. All right. Whereas Jackie Bivier has been in the Chelsea Public Schools for 39 years. Thirty-nine. And whereas Jackie has been a dedicated para-professional, you were a para-professional? I didn't realize that. Para-professional educator, assistant principal, and principal since 1983 at the Williams School, the Kelly School, and the Early Learning Center. And whereas Jackie has been a positive role model for students and staff throughout the district. And whereas Jackie has conducted her responsibilities with dignity and professionalism. And whereas she has brought honor to herself, her family, and her colleagues through her contributions and dedicated to the youth of Chelsea. And therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent and the members of the Chelsea School Committee extend their sincerest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Jackie Bivier on her contributions to and career with the Chelsea School Department on this occasion of her retirement. on this occasion of her retirement.
I'm like your mother. Leave you go out this year.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and move on. We still have a couple more. So, the next one is not a retirement. It's, it's a good leaving. And Adam, I don't have a citation for you. I just, I have just an appreciation and a thank you. Adam Delady, our deputy superintendent, is going to be leaving us. His last day is June seventeenth. And so, he's already been doing a lot of work with the Melrose Public Schools, and he is assuming the role of superintendent on July first. So, Adam, Mr. Delady, I know you don't like all of the warm and fuzzy things, but we're gonna do them anyways. And school committee members, if you wanna say something, please say something too. So, I just wanna say, Adam, thank you. I have gotten to work with you since four, five years. You've been my, I call you my steady because that's what you are. You're, you're, you're very, you're quiet and pensive, but then you also, I know, I know what you're gonna say tomorrow. You're quiet with me, but I also know that once we get you going, you, you, you do, you will, you talk, and we listen. And I have just learned so much from you. You are a servant leader, and that's what I saw in you since the beginning, when I first met you. And another thing that people don't know, when, when I came on board, there was an opening for an assist, we knew there was gonna be an opening for an assistant superintendent, and the then superintendent, Dr. Burke, told me, "You're gonna need to find an assistant superintendent really soon." And then October rolled around, and she, she was like, "Oh, me, you need to, have, have you found anyone?" And I really was, I really wanted to find someone who was from Chelsea, from Chelsea Public Schools, who knew the community, who knew the schools. Because I, I wasn't, I'm not, I wasn't from Chelsea. I didn't know the schools. And so, I needed someone who could help me navigate. And I knew that I also needed someone who was completely opposite of me. So, that would be Mr. Delady in many ways. And it's, it's helpful as a leader to have someone who is completely opposite, so that way we could work together and complement each other. So, Adam, thank you for complimenting me and just being, being there. I, I'm gonna really miss working with you. Your integrity is something that you don't come by every day. And so, I would ask, I would often ask, "Adam, what do you think? What do you think about this one?" And then you would give me your thoughts, and I'd be like, "Okay." Or when you decided, asked me, "I'll take on COVID." And, and I've said this before, but it's like it ended up being a three-year thing. And I think Adam knew more about the COVID rates in Chelsea before everybody else did, because Adam watched them like a hawk. Because we, we were always watching the, the COVID rates. Anytime COVID was reported, Adam knew. He would send it out, "Here's the drill." Anytime there was an update, Adam was up to date with it before Desi. And we were always ahead of the game because Adam was always keeping watch in that area for us. And Adam, I don't think I could have gotten through the COVID pandemic without having you right there with me. And I'm, I'm so grateful. We went through a lot together. Remember being scared, and remember just going, "What are we gonna do?" And we just kind of fumbled our way through it together. And I'm, I'm forever grateful to have that, and I'm gonna miss you. So, anybody else wants to say anything?
Well, I think I only said so much. But the same, I mean, I had always known Adam through the years of being here in school committee. But I always thought he was so serious. And I, I did, I was like, "Oh, that guy looks really serious." But I always heard good things about him. And then when COVID hit, and you started working so much with us and with all the stats and everything to do with COVID, and helped us so much, because I think, I mean, the amount of knowledge that you were able to supply us with was phenomenal. And we started doing so much work with you, and we started seeing, I started seeing a whole different Adam. And I've just gotten to like you so much. And you've been more than helpful. I can always reach out to you and ask you for any information. You've always been so quick to get it to me, get it to any of us in the school committee. And you know how I feel about you leaving. I've told you every time I see you. But I am thoroughly happy for you, in your opportunity that you're having. I'm sorry for us, because we, we will so miss you. But you've made amazing friends here, and you're always gonna come back and see us. And I wish you the best of luck. Does anybody else have anything?
Um, this is one of those situations where I wish I could just say present, but I won't. I am gonna thank you, because you, you know, as everyone else, I have worked a good deal with you since I came on school committee, and you have shed a lot of knowledge. Dr. Abada says that this is one of her favorite, you know, meetings. And, you know, it is, because we celebrate so much. But this is by far the most, the, the bittersweet aspect of it. And for me, it definitely is. I always joke about, you know, preparing for the zombie apocalypse and the aspect of it, you know, the, the tiers of the, having the knowledge. And as Dr. Abada said, I wasn't here for the COVID aspect of it. But coming on to the school committee, I was very clear that I wanted to know what the protocols and everything that the school and the district had in place. And when I came and I asked, you were very clear that you had all of that in place, and with a straight face. You were very serene. And afterwards, as I got to know you, I started to say, "He's so good at just calming me down while panicking." I know he's panicking, because he probably just noticed that he hasn't, there's something that he didn't calculate already. Or there's something that he has to go back and circle back and find, panic some more on, on, on the back, you know, on, on his end, and then he'll get back to me. So, as Anna said, you know, with, with working with Adam, there's, there's always that level of, "It's handled." And it, it's, it's, it is bittersweet for us. But it's for the best. We wish you the best on your end. And you're gonna be great. And I look forward to our indicators of success today. And our future ones are, I'm sure, gonna be just as great. So, that's all on my end.
Adam? Because of you, I have the first shirt of the Berkowitz School. I remember when I first met you, I was assigned to adopt the School of Berkowitz, and I went there and I saw this serious guy. We all love the team of the T-shirts. But then I was amazed how the different strategies for visual learners, for, you know, touching, for those who are just listeners, the different strategies that you had at the Berkowitz School. And I always say, "We need to duplicate that." I am amazed with that level of attention that you did put into those curriculums. And when you came on board as the assistant principal, I said, "Yes, this is the guy we need here." I'm gonna miss you. Thank you for giving back to Chelsea, our community. And I know that we are losing a great asset, but is it Melrose? I'm gonna go with my activism heart, and I'm gonna do a rally there. Bring him back, bring him back. Good luck.
And one more thing I forgot to say, and I, is there's a connection here with Ms. Jackie Bivier and Adam. So, Jackie was Adam's teacher. First grade, fifth grade teacher. So, Jac- Jackie, no.
Just give them my data, Burke.
No, but that just shows you, Jackie, you must be very proud of your student.
Jackie, thank you so much. You did a great job.
Adam, why don't, I don't know if anyone else.
Um, I just wanted to echo Dr. Abada's sentiments too, of just how powerful it is to have someone who's homegrown to this community. And it's evident in the relationships that you have with students, families, and parents. And I just wanna thank you again for asking, for answering all of our questions. I know that sometimes they were, whether it was follow-up, really appreciate your dedication, your tenacity to ensure that we were well-equipped with the necessary information. And I think it's the power of being a role model, right? Of ensuring that folks who are from Chelsea can come back and be leaders within their community. And I just wanna thank you for setting an example for those. And we had a student honored today who wanted to become a teacher. And I just wanna thank you for continuing that legacy within Chelsea. So, we have homegrown folks that are ready and willing to becoming, to be able to come back to our community. So, thank you.
Um, I just wanted to say that life has a, has a way to go full circle. Because I first met Mr. Delady when I was in elementary school. He was the principal. And now to think that we are both leaving Chelsea Public Schools at the same time is, is kinda crazy. I just wanna say thank you for sticking with Chelsea Public Schools for as long as you have. And I really hope you continue to, to give a spark to everyone you meet.
Thank you. Okay, Adam? You made me cry. That was perfect. That's the best thing you wanna hear from one of your former students. Okay. Okay, so we have one more, a couple more certificates to give out. And I'm gonna go ahead and, this is for our student, school committee members. And so, we have three amazing student school committee members who were present. They came at, to every single meeting, there was a rotation. But this was the first year that we had students come be at every single meeting. So, I wanna say thank you for your dedication. Thank you for taking this work so seriously. And I, I, I hope you learn something too. But I, our first was Jimmy Moreno Gueda, and he's, he's not here tonight. But Jimmy was also a class president. And he won many, he was, won many awards last night. And I know he is going to be going to Harvard University on a full-ride scholarship. So, congratulations to Jimmy. And the next person we have is a student, is Josue Castell, Castellon. And Josue, I know you're headed to, was it Bridgewater? Bridgewater, that's what I, Bridgewater. And again, was awarded last night with many awards. And our, our students are just amazing. I don't know who picked them this year, but I just wanna say, wow, continue, because this was such, you, you were so strong in how you guys let, how all of you led together. And so, but I also, in doing so, I also had somebody mentor the students when they come to school committee, and that is Dr. Erin Jennings. So, I did ask Dr. Jennings to say a few words about both. And you can start off with Josue, and then school committee members, please comment, and then we'll do the next student.
Great. But before that, I do want to mention that I'm looking forward to seeing Jimmy on Harvard's campus next year from time to time. So I'm looking forward to seeing that. It was a great joy and honor to walk alongside Jose this year, to see his growth and maturity. As you get to know Jose, you know he is a man of few words. But when he speaks, wisdom is present. And so it was amazing to lean in and to listen to the wisdom and maturity that is present with him. And so I am most certain that when he's done with schooling, when he's done with his masters or J.D., that we are definitely looking at a future elected leader. Not just for Chelsea, but for Massachusetts as a whole. So it was an honor to walk alongside of you, sir. Thank you.
I wanted to say that it's been amazing having you guys here. I've been at this for 15 years and I've seen many students. And you have truly been a perfect example of what the student reps should be. You've been at every meeting you have had, the perfect attitude. You've gotten involved, you've kept us so involved in what's going on at Chelsea High. You've made us feel like we're there. Every time you've gone to explain something or given us details, I could close my eyes and actually feel like I'm at the event that you're explaining to us, or what you're proposing. And that is truly what these roles should be. So you are an amazing example of what we should have here every year. And I'm so grateful for both of you and for Jimmy. It's been, and it was wonderful being at the awards last night and seeing you guys get all your awards. And made me so proud, made us all so proud. So thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to say thank you to Javen Diaz, Jose Castellon, and Jimmy Moreno for being amazing student reps this year. Although it was only my first year, so you are the only student reps I've ever worked with. But you're still the best. And I just want to, you know, shout out you guys for really going above and beyond. I know that you were engaged in Mazer, the Massachusetts Association of Student Representatives, which is a statewide organization. You were doing a lot of political advocacy at the state level. You guys have been activists in your community on so many levels. You're not just here like as like a fun little extracurricular. Like you're trying to make a change and make a difference. And being a student rep isn't always easy. It's a political thing. You are here because by Massachusetts state law, we have to have elected student representatives on the school committee. And you are just as important as the adult representatives. And you have that responsibility. And you've carried it very well. And I'm really proud of you for everything that you did this year. And the next student representatives have big shoes to fill. But the student representative role is really, really important. Because you guys as students, it's all about what happens to the students. Like if your voices aren't represented here, then what are we even doing? So thank you so much.
So Jose, we have a little something for you if you want to come up and we can all come.
I'm sorry.
I just want to say thank you so much. For me, this is my first year. And the way that you perform all your duties, it's amazing. You have a lot of talent. And I hope you continue and keep going because you're gonna go far away.
Thank you.
And then our next student rep is Javen Diaz. And Javen, I've gotten to know you over the years through actually Dr. Jennings. Because I think you were Dr. Jennings' friend first.
And then you became our friend.
And then you became our friend. So Javen, I just, I want to say thank you for always, and all of our student reps. And Jonathan, every time I go to the high school, I would see them. And they would like miss and give me hugs. And so, and all transparency. On the day I had on my calendar, it said seniors' last day. Again, I started to cry on the way into work. I was like, oh, this class is so special. And so you're the class that has been with me for four, this is the first class that I've had for all four years of high school as a superintendent. And I'm really gonna miss you guys when I walk into that high school. I know I'll make new friends, but.
She's going to try.
But I really, there are just certain, there are kids in your life. As I was a kindergarten teacher, that you never forget. And that's the joy in this work. And you have given me, all of you have given me so much joy. And on the hard days, I see you in the hallways and I visit Chelsea High School and I get my hugs. And I'm like, I can do this. So I just want to say thank you for inspiring me and encouraging me. You have no idea, so I'm just super grateful. And I'm gonna have Dr. Jay say a few words and then everybody will chime in, I'm sure.
I would be remiss if I didn't mention Ms. Jennifer Knight, the Assistant Principal of C.H.S. She actually just texted me and sent me claps to give to you all. And so just want to convey her love and affection for you both. I don't know any adult who has met Javen and hadn't fallen in love with him. His heart is present and you see it. Javen was on my hiring committee in October 2020. And I was so impressed with this young man. I immediately said after, before I knew I was hiring any of those formalities, I said, I'm gonna be your mentor. And so if anyone knows me, I never say that to a potential mentee. That's not what you do. That's the protocol 101, never say to a mentee, you're gonna mentor them. But I said it to this young man. And he has, as much as I would like to say I've been a gift to him, he has been a gift to me. Javen, I have been impressed with you since day one. Your care, your compassion for your community, for your family. You have, there's a poem that, one line in the poem says, "Life hasn't been a crystal stair." Talks about the drudgery, the challenge of life. And life has been at times hard, and yet you have always persevered. And so in this next phase in your life, I'm looking forward to walking alongside of you again and to root you on and saying persevere, persevere, persevere.
What can I say to you? From the minute I met you, you just, there was something very special about you. I felt instantly connected. And I even shared with you things that I haven't shared with actually some adults. But you are an extremely special young man. All of you are. And I realized when I was writing my speech for graduation, that this class that's graduating now actually was the class that started first grade when I started school committee. So it's been literally your entire school life has been my life here. And there's something about the senior class that's very special. Each child that I've spoken to, young adult, I feel like it's almost a little bit of a child to me. I also feel extremely old when I say things like this. Nonetheless, it makes me so proud and so happy. I feel, I feel as though it was my kid's graduation coming up. So I can't guarantee I'm not going to cry on Saturday and make a total fool of myself. But I am extremely proud of each and every one of you. And especially you guys that we've gotten to get so close to. And thank you once again for coming into our world. Even though it's a regulation, I am very happy that you guys are the ones that came in. Anyone else?
To both of you. Little did I knew that he's my neighbor. I just learned that when I saw his mom yesterday. I always see him on my other volunteer side, la colaborativa. They are always very engaged and I always gonna hopefully to see you back. And you guys are both very special, so please don't forget about Chelsea. Come back like he did and give back to your community. So you can also be the mentor for the future of our Chelsea.
But then don't leave us, like Adam.
Yes, follow his steps.
Sorry, Adam, I had to say that.
Looking forward to see you in the future. And we're gonna miss you, truly miss you.
I remember sitting in your seat not too long ago. And truly, you are the, both of you and Jimmy are the definition of the best has yet to come. You continue to set the standard for your peers, yourselves, and continue to hold the bar high for each of us and show the best of our community. So thank you so much for showing us the glimpses of joy, joyful learning, whether it's in sports, whether it's in proms and all the things that you all organize. And so I thank you so much for all that you've contributed to your school community. And I can't wait for you all to sit alongside us in the future, hopefully as school committee members. So thank you for continuing to set an example for each of your seats as student representatives. So thank you so much and I can't wait to see you cross that stage on Saturday.
So I think I'm good. They say that good things come in three. So Javen, Jimmy, Jose, all Js. We broke protocol and we did good. So thank you for your advocacy. And as my peer said, everything that you guys did, even from before you guys stepped in here as student representatives, was incredible. Even when we didn't see eye to eye, you advocated. You brought things to our attention that needed to be, you know, brought up to our attention. Sometimes they pertain to you, sometimes they pertain to other people. So thank you for that. I have no doubt in my mind that you're going to do great things. You guys are always cheerful, even when maybe you didn't feel so great. You were present in multiple events. And I believe that the biggest reason why you're gonna be successful is because you guys have sat there and celebrated so many of your peers' accomplishments. And I've mentioned this before. And that's something that not a lot of people know how to do, not even adults. And that's humility. That is a very, very distinctive quality. And that is an example of a noble heart. And if you can keep that and preserve it, even through the darkest of times, you're gonna continue to do well. Because you're going to, what you put out into the universe, the world, whatever you want to believe, that's gonna keep coming back into you. And you guys celebrate other people's accomplishments. And whether you're there already or you're on your way there, your ability to do that and be happy for other people's, hey, my, you know, the girls' track team, they're worked hard, they're getting there. They're gonna be at this meet, they're, you sat there and every single meeting, you told us who was where, how hard they worked there. This is a pretty big deal, we're getting these. That was incredible. You celebrated every single sport, every single meet, this, hey, come see us here. The plays, everything. We're doing prom, you were, that was magnetic. That energy was channeled through everything. The way you guys sat here and, you know, highlighted events, created projects. And the attention to detail, I mean, that was just, those presentations were on a scholarly level. I think you could probably teach your teachers how to do some of that work, really. So I have no, there's no question in our minds that you're gonna create and do amazing things. So carry on.
I would like to say something, it's something that I don't know if everybody, I've been here as school committee members in the past. And I'm the less spoken person here at the committee. But this is something that I would like to say during my years in the past as a school committee member. I didn't really see a student representation in a way that you have represented the students here. It is really for me like an honor to be observing how you've been developing yourself, representing your peers and the concerns of the students to us. And the way spoken, the way that I speak about what you're thinking about, your goal, your students and your peers, it's really impressed. It's really a base for me because you really care about, not only for your education, but for everybody else that is at the school. And I really wish you the best. And I always remember that you are from Chelsea. And when you go up there, just try to be the best that you are. Because this is where you are. So thank you for who you are.
Anyone else? Before we get up?
Before we get up.
Okay, and we have, we're gonna go, I have one more retiree that's been here. Yeah, we have one more retiree that is here and I, so I'm gonna, we're gonna go back 'cause I, I, because our retiree is here, I wanna make sure we acknowledge. So, Angel Rivera. I wanna make sure, is it A-Angel or Anhel? Anhel, okay.
Don't try to stay sitting down.
Okay, Anhel, you need to stay right here. Okay. So, whereas Anhel has been in the Chelsea Public Schools for over seventeen months. Seventeen, I know, seventeen years. I know, so I'm like seventeen years. And whereas, he has been dedicated, a dedicated paraprofessional since 2007 at the John Silver Early Learning Center. Whereas, Anhel has been a positive role model for students and staff throughout the district. Whereas, Anhel has conducted his responsibilities with dignity and professionalism. And whereas, he has brought honor to himself, his family, and his colleagues through his contributions and dedication to the youth of Chelsea. And therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent and the members of the Chelsea School Committee extend their sincerest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Anhel Rivera on his contributions to and career with the Chelsea School Department on this occasion of his retirement. Congratulations.
Wow.
Okay, so that completes our award portion of school committee.
Thank you, thank you. We'll move on to public comment now. Does anyone have anything they'd like to present? Seeing no public comment, we'll move on to the next two presentations. There's none. We'll move on again to Dr. Abada for superintendent, for the superintendent report. I can't speak.
So, we have our, um, our usual indicators of success. And Adam, this is your last one. So, make it, make it good.
Thank you, Dr. Abada.
Oh, she said make it quick.
So, as this is my last indicators of success presentation, I'm, I'm gonna go a little off script and there's nothing you can do about it, so. You know, I first, I wanna thank everybody for all the kind words. It's really meant a lot to work with you, doing this role, uh, serving in this role has been the honor of my lifetime. I mean that with everything I can muster. They say you can take the, you can take the kid out of Chelsea, you can't take the Chelsea out of the kid. And that's usually meant with some sort of negativity, but I take nothing but pride in that. And I can promise you all that I will be continuing the tradition of indicators of success in my new district, I've already worked that in.
I'm sure you have some experience.
A little bit, yeah. So, with that, you know, I, I do wanna point out that I, and I know Sarah is a researcher by trade and so you'll appreciate this and the fact that I, I do come here every month and report indicators of success and it's all quantitative data. But I do wanna point out that the qualitative data that we've seen tonight, all of our Students of the Year, that is hard evidence that we're doing the right thing by kids here. We've seen some amazing success stories. We have our valedictorian going to Brown. My own daughter, that is her dream to be a valedictorian going to Brown. And so, we're, we're seeing that happen here in Chelsea and I'm so proud of all of our kids and that tells us that what we're doing is, is, is right. And we also have three other indicators and, and that is Hosway, Jimmy, and Javen. And I do want to say a little bit because you guys had your chance. So, Hosway and Jimmy were Berkowitz students with me, so I take all the credit for their success. I do, I do. But I, I will say the, the beautiful thing about this and, and Dr. Jennings and I, and, and Ms. Knight worked, was it Ms. Knight on the panel, right? We, we had to interview these kids and Dr. Abada said we had to select two. And we came out of that process and we said, we can't do it. We just, I can't, we can't take one of these amazing kids and, and, so we worked it out so that we had three. And all three students are so very different. And I know Jimmy and Hosway are the same now as they were in Berkowitz in a lot of ways. Hosway, one of the kindest human beings I've ever met, but also so talented, gifted, and hardworking and just a quiet leader in his own way. Jimmy, the exact opposite. Not that he's not kind, but he's, he's an agitator, he's a disruptor in all the right ways. You know, he's someone who's gonna find things that can be fixed and find ways to fix them. And I know he's not here today, but I hope he can hear these words at some point. Jimmy, I love you. He's, he's been amazing as well. Javen, I did not know in elementary school, but I will say that this guy steps up in front of all the administrators in the district in our summer summit where we do professional development for all of our administrators. And this guy does the keynote. He's the keynote speaker and he knocks everybody off their socks. What an amazing speaker. And if you remember what I said to you that day, as Dr. Abada was speaking and you and I, I wasn't paying attention, I was talking to you.
It's okay.
And I said, you see that young lady up there? You can do that. And so, I, you know, I see that leadership. I can see Javen being a superintendent for Chelsea Public Schools someday and any one of the three, so.
I hope I'm still not here.
So, you are our indicators of success because it's just clearly evident that we are doing right by kids because we have such amazing success, success stories. We just need to work to make this happen for all of our students. And, and we're, we're there. So, tonight, I'm gonna jump into the, the quantitative stuff and it's brief, if I can get my computer to work. There we go. So, our attendance rates, we've been doing pretty well with attendance all year. As you see by the color coding, the monthly data, all of the green is an improvement over the previous month. So, month to month, we've had pretty good success increasing our attendance rates over the year. We do have four grades that dropped from April to May and those are grades nine, ten, and eleven, and twelve. And those, those all are in the same school, but I, I think there's something to do with that. They kept going up and up and up and up. Eventually, they're gonna come down. However, when you look at the year-to-date trends, we are now on pace for all grades with the exception of six, nine, and ten to improve their attendance rates over last year. So, we're really proud of all this data. Our eleventh and twelfth graders improved over the previous year. And, you know, our, the, the ones that dropped, dropped very little. So, we, we did a really good job. Our students did a great job of coming to school and being ready to learn every day. Our dropout rates, this is an area that we, we do want to improve on. Our dropout rate as of the end of May, we're at seven point two four percent. That's a number that we do want to improve. But I do think there's some factors here, the, the, the level of transancy in terms, as you look at the in-out data that I'll do on my last slide, you'll see that we've had more students come in and leave than we've ever had before. And so, when we have transient populations, those fall under our dropout rates. And so, I, I would love to see some research around looking at students who've been with us for, say, more than five years, more than six years because I, I would venture to guess the dropout rates in, in that population are very low. As you break down through programs, our total students are at three point nine seven, which is a slight uptick over last year at three point seven eight. Our multilingual learners are our Ls. That's a total of thirteen point five eight percent. Last year, it was thirteen point one seven. So, it's very close, but a slight uptick. And our students with disabilities, we're starting to track those separately this year, so our baseline will be four point one five percent. In the month of May, we had four students withdrawn. But luckily, three of those, we were able to set up with an adult ed program and one is a location unknown. Three of them were ninth graders, one of them was a tenth grader. And our last, the very last piece of data that I will share, our in-out data, our total for the district for the month of May, we had sixty-five newly student, uh, students newly registered for the month of May and twenty-nine students withdrew or signed out. ELC had eight come in, zero out. Elementary had eighteen come in and seven out. Middle school had sixteen in, nine out. And the high school had twenty-three in and thirteen out. So, our total for the year up until the last day of May, we still have this last month of June, so that's why you don't have all the other data with the report cards and the iReady data because that's still being finalized. Someone will present that to you in September. So, we've had a total of seven hundred sixty-seven students register over the course of the school year and four hundred fifty students left the district. So, that is, you know, about twelve hundred students in and out over the course of the year, which gives us a transancy rate of nineteen point eight percent, which basically means on average, if, if a teacher is looking at their classroom, you can say one out of about five kids is gonna be different than when you started in the school year. So, that's, you know, very difficult to get traction, but this is Chelsea and, and that's the, you know, that, that's some of the nature of an immigrant community where we have students coming in and out. And, you know, I will end with a phrase, you know, that we've had for a long time in the district is we welcome and we educate. And so, with that, that ends my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, anyone?
No questions by me this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, and the next report is our personnel update. And you can see we've had just a couple of new hires. And we do track who we're hiring. We're looking to diversify our, all of our staff. We've hired thirty-three percent Caucasian, sixty-six percent Hispanic. And then, my apologies. I'm, well, I, I'm going, permission to go out of order. Come back, I apologize. I was eager Beaver to get this report 'cause I, I was, I was looking at our enrollment report. Our next report is the enrollment report where we're ending our year, our school year with six thousand three hundred and twenty-four students. That is higher than when we started our year at about six thousand two hundred. So, I would like to commend these two reports to the record and then we will go jump back up to student, student rep updates. My apologies.
Good evening, everyone. It's been a bittersweet moment tonight. Lots of emotions, happy, sad. But doing the student rep update every school committee meeting has been, you know, it's been exciting, you know, 'cause every single month I walk through those doors and it's, I'm greeted with smiles, hugs, handshakes. And I truly can't say what it means to me to walk in here every single month and feel the love and feel the enjoyment of just sharing what me and my peers are doing for the past month or, you know, what we have been up to as student reps. It's been truly, truly inspiring to be a voice for not only myself, but my peers. And the, the importance of being a student rep, I didn't realize at first. And then it kinda, it kinda settled in. It kinda realized that I'm not just a voice for my peers and I'm not just telling it to the school committee, but I'm telling it to the city of Chelsea, to the community. And I think that really changed on how I started sharing things as well 'cause I felt like this is what the community needs to hear. They need to hear about, you know, my peers' achievements. They need to hear about all the good things we're doing in Chelsea High. They need to hear about all the positives. I just feel like being a student rep has brought me tremendous amount of joy. The memories I've created, the people I've been with and worked with, it's been like truly, truly, truly inspiring and I can't thank anyone enough. But I would definitely like to give a special shout out to the people that have been helping us this entire time. Ms. Penya, Ms. Knight, Dr. Jay, everybody sitting over there, really. You guys have been tremendous and I can't thank you guys enough from the bottom of my heart. And I will always carry on being a student rep here. I'll always carry on the memories that we have and I'll always carry on Chelsea.
Okay, so before we begin, I don't have a script, so bear with me if I start stuttering. But as we close this chapter, I wanna say I am immensely grateful for this opportunity to school committee, to the superintendent team. Everyone has been such an amazing support. I really hope that next year's student reps can continue on this legacy and just also be the voice for the student body 'cause that's what's important. Even though, like, as students, teachers, and faculty, they are like the, the body or like the blood of the, of Chelsea community, like the Chelsea Public Schools. But the Chelsea School Committee and the superintendent team are the brains and heart. And it's gonna be tough leaving. But I know I'll be back, either school committee or city council. But I wanna come back to make a difference like you all. Thank you. Have a wonderful night.
This is succession planning. Committee reports, subcommittee minutes.
We are commending the minutes, the subcommittee minutes to the report with, with a request for revisions on some of the minutes. Just some, some revisions, basic revisions on not the actual body of the minutes, but some just clarification that we will represent at the next school committee minutes. Next school committee meeting. Can I get a motion?
Motion. Second.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing we have no unfinished business, we'll move on to the new business for this evening. Consideration and action to accept five thousand dollars from Boston College to the Youth Leadership Initiative Grant for fiscal year two thousand to the Youth Leadership Initiative Grant for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-five. Can we get a roll call?
Mr. Gomez Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan?
Yes.
Ms. Cobas Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. Valderas?
Yes.
Dr. Neville?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative.
Nine in the affirmative, motion passes. Second item is, excuse me. Consideration in action to accept a total of fifteen thousand dollars from the Chelsea Educational Foundation for the Intergenerational Literacy Program for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. Can we get a roll call?
Mr. Gomez Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan?
Yes.
Ms. Cobas Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. Valderas?
Yes.
Dr. Neville?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative.
Nine in the affirmative, motion passes. Next item, consideration in action to accept thirteen thousand eighty dollars for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for the FASSA completion grant. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gomez Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan?
Yes.
Ms. Cobas Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. Valderas?
Yes.
Dr. Neville?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative.
Nine in the affirmative, motion passes. Next item, consideration in action to accept up to seven hundred thousand dollars from the One Eight Foundation to support two hundred and seventy Ignite readers tutorials seats for the first grade students in the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gomez Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan?
Yes.
Ms. Cobas Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. Valderas?
Yes.
Dr. Neville?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative.
Nine in the affirmative, motion passes. Next item, consideration in action to accept the gift of five dozen softballs from Sean O'Regan to the Chelsea High School's girls softball team with an estimate value of two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gomez Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan?
Present.
Ms. Cobas Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. Valderas?
Yes.
Dr. Neville?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative and one present. I'm sorry, eight in the affirmative and one present.
And one present, motion passes.
May I ask a question about something I forgot to ask? What is the Chelsea Educational Foundation?
It is the foundation that when we receive monetary donations, it was set up. I don't know when it was set up. I believe it was set up when our inversement program was established years ago, and it was, it's to hold funds and donations. And so at the beginning, it was with Bob Hildreth, who donated a certain amount for scholarships. And then the money is in the, the awardees were awarded, I believe, in like elementary. And then by the time students had graduated, they would get a certain amount of scholarship money from inversement. So we still have that, that open. And then if we were to receive large, like, let's say, cash donations, we would go through that foundation.
Thank you.
Next item, consideration in action to adopt the non-bargaining salary and wage schedules for two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five for hourly positions and salaried positions. Roll call?
Can I ask a question about this too? Can you just give us a little more background on what this is?
Sure, I'm gonna actually call up Ms. Lamboy to the podium, please.
Thank you.
Good evening. As the report indicates, for our salaried positions, back in two thousand fourteen, the Collin Center at UMass Boston created a salary structure. Behind it is a whole set of criteria that help us determine into which category various positions fall. Each year in June, we look at the ranges relative to market changes, cost of living, et cetera, and recommend to this body changes to the bands, should it be appropriate. In this case, in the report, we are actually creating one new title and recommending that three positions elevate within the structure, a reevaluation of the duties and responsibilities warrants that they be moving up. We also have our athletic coach wages are also for action this evening as well.
So this is, this is a salary scale for basically every staff who's not part of a union in Chelsea?
That is correct, and the superintendent can appoint within the band that you have adopted.
Okay. Did I, I remember, I read it, I read it. Roll call? I couldn't remember if I had read it or if you had asked for an explanation. Can I get a roll call?
Mr. Gomez Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan?
Yes.
Ms. Cobas Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. Valderas?
Yes.
Dr. Neville?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative.
Nine in the affirmative, motion passes. Next item, consideration in action to authorize a prepayment of up to three point five million dollars in special education out-of-district tuition fees in the SCENE Collaborative and the, and/or the SHURE Collaborative for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five. Can we get a roll call?
Mr. Gomez Pereira?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan?
Yes.
Ms. Cobas Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. Valderas?
Yes.
Dr. Neville?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative.
Nine in the affirmative, motion passes. Next item, consideration in action to approve a budget transfer in the amount of up to one point five million from the benefits and insurance in special education and pupil personnel services to district administration, instruction, and assessment, other instructional programs, and information technology. Can we get a roll call?
Mr. Gomez Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan?
Yes.
Ms. Cobas Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. Valderas?
Yes.
Dr. Neville?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative.
Nine in the affirmative, motion passes. Next item, consideration in action to approve the final draft of the newly created Code of Character Conduct and Support. Can we get a roll call?
Mr. Gomez Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan?
Yes.
Ms. Cobas Caraballo?
Could I say something quickly? I'm sorry, I didn't jump in before we started. Just make sure where I stopped, did I get clarity on that? I'm sorry, I didn't get you, okay. I'm just noting where I stopped. Thank you. I just, I just wanted to like take a quick pause, because I think that this is a really important thing for the school district, that we should give a little bit of attention. The Code of Character Conduct and Support is a, it's a policy. It's a district-wide policy. And, you know, as school committee, we have three duties, which are to set and pass policy, to pass the budget, and to hire and evaluate the superintendent. So I just kind of want to emphasize that it's really important for us as school committee members to be engaged when it comes to like overhauling or creating new policies like this, especially something that's so far-reaching and has like really significant consequences for our students. I think that the Code of Character Conduct and Support is really good, and I don't have any problems at all with what's in it. I think it's a, it's a great policy. I think that, I mean, I don't think that there's like anyone in particular to blame about this, but it's like, I kind of feel like maybe school committee members should have been a little bit more engaged in the process of this, of creating this. I don't know what that should have looked like, because I wasn't here for most of it. You know, the creation of this policy has been led by these consultants engaging schools over the past like year, two years, like a while, I think. So, you know, before I was here. But I think that, you know, as school committee members, we have a responsibility to, to, you know, not just vote on things and say like, yes, 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 but to really represent our constituents in the setting of policy. So I think that, you know, as, as we come to the new school year and everything in the fall, we should, we should be thinking as a committee about how we can strengthen our processes as a, as a committee to make sure that we're in the loop with, with stuff like this. How maybe if there was one or two people involved, how they can be sharing that information back to other committee members so that everyone is informed, so that, you know, we are, we can kind of vote with integrity and with full like knowledge of what we're voting on and really, you know, representing the community in this process, because the community elected us to do this job.
Kelly Garcia was very involved in, in...
Great.
This creation, I think that, that, and the fact she's not here anymore, or here as the representative for city council. But she was very involved in the setting up of this and going through the whole process. So, but absolutely, I totally agree with you. This is not, and we take it very seriously. We can, and I know that a lot of times I have a very different way of, of being a chair, of being on the school committee, because I've learned throughout the years that we need to do this role, but also show our human and very down-to-earth side to, to our constituents and all of our students, so that we're much more approachable and much more friendly, where we're not standoffish, where I think we were very much so in the past. I think we weren't as easily approached as we are now. I think the way that we are now, I think people feel very comfortable approaching us, whether it be students, faculty, or the people that live around us. So, but I totally agree that we think we need to be very much involved in, in all this. And because it's very important that we understand what our role is and how we need to do it. So...
So back to the Code of Character.
Yep.
I will say, this was something that was discussed, and as I mentioned, within the policy and procedure conversation. This was a matter that we did have multiple forums that took place. I do believe, I will echo your sentiment, that we do have to have open dialogue. We do have to do our duties. It's not just a yes, yes, yes. I've never been a yes, a yes ma'am, a yes sir type of person. But I also believe that most of our information, most of these school committee, city council meetings, all of these have, we are in a technology era. So most of these meetings, most of this information is digitalized, digitized. Most of these records, we can do our due diligence and go back and get some of the insight. As far as policy and procedure and most of this stuff, we can go back and be informed. The administrative staff, should we have any questions, are available to answer that. If we need any further information, there was a very thoughtful and very articulate and well-performed and explained in a very inclusive pictures, diagrams, you know. And, and yes, while they did bring outside sources, I think the outside sources was just for the notion that we were looking at language from not just a perspective of making sure that we were being politically correct, but making sure that we were being inclusive in all aspects. So this Code of Character is more to make sure that it's really reflective of our values as a community and that it's equitable across the board. And as, I know that I'm only supposed to wear one hat at a time as a parent, I, I am glad that we could potentially implement it as a school committee member. It makes me even more comfortable, because now when my constituents go ahead and reach out to me and they have a question or they have something to say, whether it's a discrepancy within, or they want to know how to navigate, then if we have families that are within the K through twelve, you know, school system or the district, right, then yes, it's gonna vary, like I said at the, you know, policy and procedure meeting. It's gonna range based on, a little bit on the principle, but there's gonna be continuity within our districts. And I could say, well, if you go into the, into the website, you're gonna be able to pull up this document here and file A, B, C, and then take it from here. Everything, there's accountability, and it's very clearly stated what is expected from parents, teachers, and admin. And we are covered across the board. So I think it's very inclusive. It is, you know, yes, right now it's simplified, but it is simplified because so many proper avenues were also taken. And the fact that it is something that was done within almost a three-year timeframe also speaks volumes. So thank you for bringing that up, but I will be voting yes. Veronica?
Are we all set?
Can I go back?
Does anyone else have anything they, they want to add to this before we move on? Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Gladie. Modify, we can start from the, can we start from the beginning of the roll call? Let me reread, let me do the whole thing. Consideration in action to approve the final draft of the newly created Code of Character Conduct and Support. Can I get a roll call, Rado?
Mr. Gomez Pereira?
Present.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan?
Yes.
Ms. Cobas Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. Valderas?
Yes.
Dr. Neville?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
That's eight in the affirmative and one present.
Eight in the affirmative, one present, motion passes. Next item, consideration in action to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the following field trips. Out-of-state field trip to New Britain High School in Connecticut on July ninth from, for their twelve-reach students and two chaperones to attend the basketball clinic hosted by M-PAC Mentoring Incorporated. The next is the out-of-state field trip to Splash Town, USA in Portland, Maine on August eighth for sixty-reach students and six chaperones for the end-of-summer-reach celebration. Can I get a roll call?
Mr. Gomez Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan?
Yes.
Ms. Cobas Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. Valderas?
Yes.
Dr. Neville?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative.
Nine in the affirmative, motion passes. That is the end of the items. Do we have any announcements that anyone would like to make?
Comment, I see.
Excuse me?
Comment.
Yes.
Just wanted to say congratulations to all of the future Chelsea High School graduates on June eighth. We are looking forward to see all of you. And also, I would like to make a public that every month we have the opportunity to have you parents and to have us individually to participate on the Policies and Procedures Meetings, the Core Core and Instruction by N. Finance, and the Human Resources Meeting. Just if you're not sure of anything that is happening here, we have these meetings open. Just come to see Veronica. Veronica is an amazing support for us, or just, you know, reached out to any... Or just, you know, reach out to any of us from the district and we'll be happy to provide you with this open space so that way you also can be informed. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just want to say thank you to all that make this happen. I feel like I have only six months being in the school committee and it's been, you know, so great for me. And especially to see the duties of everybody that, I mean, you know, it's not the same thing when you're in and when you're not. So I see the amazing things that is happening in the schools and I just want to congratulate all the staff and all the students that they're amazing and that when you want something, you can get it. When you fight for something, you're gonna get it. So keep it up with a great job. And I know that, I mean, when we support each other, we can grow up more and we can succeed. Thank you so much.
I just want to thank our superintendent, our cabinet members and our superintendent's cabinet members and Veronica for all your tireless efforts to ensure that our students feel seen, heard within our school system. So just want to say thank you as you all, each and every month, you're here with us. And so I want to thank you for your support. And then I also want to thank our school committee members, like Maida had mentioned. Many of our members are new and continue to ask critical questions that are needed for our community, continue to keep a pulse within our school district and continue to set a model. So I just want to thank each and every one of you for your efforts too.
I just want to say, my hormones are whack right now because I'm like eight months pregnant. I can cry during this meeting for no reason. But, sorry. I wanted to say that this is my first year as a Chelsea Public Schools parent and my son is three and he's finishing up his first, sorry, I feel so ridiculous. It's the, you know, being eight months pregnant thing. This is his first year finishing up at the ELC and the changes that I've seen in him are really Yeah, they're really amazing. He's had an amazing experience there, amazing educators, super, super supportive educators, you know, helping him with all of his special needs and everything. He's moved from one class to another as he's been able to, you know, be in a less restrictive environment. And I just learned that this week, that they're changing a lot of the classrooms to integrated classrooms instead of sub-separate. And he's gonna be in an integrated classroom. And I'm just so, I just like, the ELC and Chelsea Public Schools has really exceeded my wildest expectations for Roby and I'm really happy and grateful. So thank you, everyone.
There's nothing better than when we see our children succeeding and evolving. It's so special. My kids went to the ELC and it was an amazing, and when I say to Jackie, when I said to Jackie that I didn't want to leave, I was so terrified to send my kids to school, you know, when they were three. And, and when I sent them and I, and they were welcomed into this program that was so amazing. And they were going the full day till 6 o'clock in the evening. And I was mortified because I was taking them from my mom to sending them there. So as a Spanish mother, I was terrified. And, and to see their growth and their development so quickly in that program, it, I totally understand because I cried like a baby with my kids when they, when they were moving from the ELC program. And, and I've even seen a change in, you know, something like today when he was here. Like he even, he was talking to me and everything. I mean, it's amazing. So I'm very happy. And I can't thank the cabinet enough and the staff. Vero, I can't, I don't have words to express to you how important you are to us, to all of us. We would never be able to do this without you. I don't know what we would do. It's, it's so critical. Every time that we, that I'm lost, I call you and you somehow ground me. And that's, that I cannot even begin to thank you enough for. I want to wish everyone a very happy summer. All the kids, please stay safe in this crazy world that we're in. Keep your heads leveled. Always think before you accept or do anything. And always know that you can do amazing things with your life and you will do amazing things with your life. Just always think before you act. And that's it. And can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.